Thank you very much, our student Christina, student trustee Christina. We'll begin our meeting regarding the in-camera. We have not finished with our in-camera session, so we do not have any motions that have been adopted or any information that has been received that we can share with you from our in-camera session. We will now move on to number two, approval of the agenda. I will ask for additions and deletions to the agenda. And firstly, trustees, eight point one under the action items, 2018 educational development charge, EDC bylaw, would you please strike that from your agenda? Are there any additions, deletions? No? Okay. A mover, please, to approve the agenda. Trustee Rose, seconded by Vice Chair Mari. All in favor? Thank you very much. Declaration of conflict of interest? None. Do I see? Thank you. Presentations, four point one, 2018 education development charge, EDC bylaw, Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is part of the final presentation for the passing of the EDC bylaw. The report that was taken off the agenda was intended for approval of the trustees for the 2018 EDC bylaw. However, we do not, we have not received the ministry approval for the board's background study, which was sent to them on March 15 and had been delayed on a couple of occasions. So on June 15, the ministry has advised the board that this background study will be, will be reviewed once again when the new minister is sworn in and debriefed. So we expect that to be around mid to the end of July. Our board bylaw lapses on June 23, which means that our board stands to lose 1.6 to 1.7 million or more for approximately a month of elapsed bylaw. The Director of Education, Paula Dawson, together with the Halton District School Board Director of Education, have sent already the ministry a letter explaining the urgency of the matter and requesting that they look at the issue and approve our background study, which our understanding is that the ministry staff have already approved the background study, so it is up for ministry's final approval. And today, we have our consultants, Brad Teichman with Overland, and Jack Amendolia of Watson and Associates, and they are going to walk you through more details today and the presentation that was prepared.
Thank you, and welcome, gentlemen. Please go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for having us here tonight. As was mentioned by Superintendent Nagoy, we were hoping tonight to be the final meeting to consider bylaw passage. But as we talked about at the previous meetings, one of the conditions before a board can pass an EDC bylaw is that they have to have ministerial approval. So we went through at the previous meetings the other conditions that the board had to satisfy, and the board has satisfied all of their conditions. We are still just waiting for this last piece of approval. And so tonight, what Mr. Teichman in here are for are really just to quickly go over the process that we went through, just to ensure trustees that board staff, consultants, legal counsel have met all the requirements. The board has done everything that they need to do to ensure these approvals to happen. And really, it's just that last piece that, like Superintendent Nagoy, what we were advised was that they couldn't give those approvals until the new cabinet was sworn in and then that new Minister of Education was briefed on the education development charge process and policy. So just to quickly review where we're at. So as was mentioned, we submitted the study to the ministry 42-day business days in advance of our original passage date, which was originally scheduled for May. The legislative requirement is that they need the study 40 business days, so we exceeded that legislative requirement. In addition, as we've mentioned to the public and trustees on prior occasions, we took the extra step this time around, even prior to that 42-day submission of the background study, to just get in touch with Ministry and Capital Services Branch, who is responsible for that review. Really, back in the winter, shortly after I was engaged to start this background study, myself, as well as representatives from the board, made the Capital Services Branch aware that the board was planning on passing a bylaw sometime around May 2018. And we were advised at that time. And the reason being why we were proactive is we knew that it would run into that provincial election. So we were proactive, let our business services know that it would be approved or the board was hoping to consider passage on or around May 2018. At that time, we were notified that that shouldn't be an issue and that the provincial election shouldn't interfere with any approvals that would be forthcoming from the ministry. We kept in touch with the Ministry of Education and the Capital Services Branch throughout the approvals process. At no time were we notified or was the board notified that there would be any delays, really until May 8, which I think was about one week before the board was considering bylaw passage. On May 8, I was personally called by the Director of the Capital Services Branch to notify us that the education development charge process and policy had become politically sensitive, in his words, and that the ministry was hesitant to provide the board with any approvals prior to the June 7 provincial election. At that time, we relayed to him the urgency of the board needing these approvals because their bylaws would actually lapse and they would go through a period of non-collection if the approvals weren't received in a timely manner. We were assured by Capital Services Branch and that May 8 phone call that, as Superintendent Nagoy mentioned earlier, that the approvals were basically done, that staff approvals were done, and they were just waiting for that signature that we all know usually comes, you know, just before that passage meeting or that letter that we need. So as you all are aware, we still had a public meeting as scheduled in mid-May. We were notified and we told the trustees and the public about what was happening with the ministry and let them know that we should have approvals shortly after the June 7 provincial election, which is why the board indicated that passage consideration would be moved to tonight's public meeting. We notified the ministry last Monday, last Tuesday, both myself and the boards, asking for a response after the election. We were notified by the ministry on the Tuesday after the election that Capital Services Branch would be meeting with the ADM office on the Wednesday of last week and that there was still a lot of confidence that our approvals would be secured at that meeting. We were then called, both myself and the boards, on Friday of last week and notified by the ministry that approvals would not be forthcoming and that the reason that they gave with regard to holding back the approvals is there's not a cabinet sworn in. And until a cabinet can be sworn in, and as I mentioned, that minister briefed on the process, no approvals would be forthcoming. We, myself, the boards, as was mentioned, the ministry has received a letter. The implications and the impact of not renewing that bylaw have been relayed to the ministry on countless occasions, so they are aware of what those possible implications, both financially, school buying power, debt service costs, all of the implications that come with it, they've been made aware of. So again, so just to ensure the trustees, I just wanted to review that process just so the trustees, the public, the board is aware of it and feels comfortable that there really couldn't be much more done, at least from a consultant, legal counsel, board staff angle, that we've already done. So just to finish off and then we'll take some questions. I just quickly want to talk about the cash flow implications and then we can take any questions if there's some more detailed issues that come up. But really, there's, in my eyes, three main issues that come up with the lapse of this bylaw. The obvious one is the board's power to continue buying sites. As we know, Halton region is growing at an incredible pace. You guys are buying school sites and opening schools, you know, barely able to keep pace with what's going on in terms of the pace of growth. So that's going to be the most obvious impact of this bylaw lapsing is your ability to buy sites, at least in the near term or short term. The other one is paying back existing debt. As the board, trustees is aware, when school boards or this board buys a site, it usually has to incur some debt in terms of that site purchase and relies on that monthly EDC revenue coming in to be able to pay off that debt and meet existing financial obligations. So that's obviously going to be impacted by a lapse in collections. And the last thing, again, that should be pretty obvious, but the board has an approximate $30 million deficit in its EDC account. We've been pretty good over the last few years at starting to bring that debt down with yearly amendments and keeping on top of rising land costs, obviously with a period of non-collection, which is estimated, you know, could be around $2 million monthly for your board. Obviously, not paying back that debt, letting that deficit increase again, that's sort of that final impact. So that's basically a summary of sort of what's been happening, where we're at, what some of the major impacts are. And Mr. Teichman, I would be happy to answer any question from trustees as well.
So if I could just add one thing to Jack's presentation about the ministry approval being withheld, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, but the ministry staff has not requested additional information from board staff or from Jack or any revisions to the background study? So it's, our conclusion is purely political. The reason, it's no deficiency in the study for the proposed charges.
Thank you very much. Trustees? Questions? Vice Chair Mari.
Yeah, two questions. One is, are there a lot of other boards in the same position? And the second question is, is there a way that the board can get back some of the lost revenue in some manner?
I'll just take the first one. Sure, Toronto Catholic is in the same position. Their bylaw expires June 30. And I understand the new minister, the new cabinet's going to be sworn in the beginning of July, so they're in the same position. And the two Simcoe boards, they were scheduled to pass their bylaw June 5, and they didn't receive their approvals either. But they're in a, they're more fortunate, it's just fortuitous. Their bylaws expire in November, so they can sit this out for a little while and run with their current bylaws. But that's the other boards.
And your counterpart, Halton District School Board as well.
Right. And then Jack, it was, what about recovery?
So recovery, I mean, that's a great question and it's, you know, unfortunately, a difficult question for us to answer right now. The situation that has occurred is unprecedented. So I mean, we've never had ministry approval not obtained and we've never had a bylaw lapse because of ministry approval not obtained. I can tell the board of trustees that practically speaking, if I had to redo that background study, absolutely, we would try to put in those legitimately growth-related education costs back into a background study and try to recover those monies. The reality is, because the legislation isn't clear, because this is something that hasn't really been done before, in all likelihood, it's something that may or may not be challenged by, through appeal of the EDC bylaw. And if it is challenged, it's likely something that's going to be decided in Ontario Municipal Board Order, now called Local Planning Tribunal.
Local Planning Appeal Tribunal.
LPA. I mean, and other avenues that are available to us would be, or available to the board would be to ask the ministry for capital funding to make up for what was lost in terms of EDC revenues. But as I understand it right now from board staff, there isn't an avenue or an ask for capital funding right now. So even that would probably be, you know, again, when the government sits, when these things start to get going again.
Thank you. Did you have another question, Paul? You're done? Trustee Rose, did you have a question? I thought I saw you. Okay. Trustee Quinn, and then trustee Danko.
Thank you. Three, Madam Chair. From which body do we actually collect the funds for the EDC revenue? Who collects that money to pay the board?
So the money is collected by the municipalities in Halton region. When a building permit is issued, that's where the charge is actually collected. The charge is paid by whoever goes out and gets that building permit. And then those funds are transferred to the board on a monthly basis.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, in a previous meeting, I had asked you why we couldn't just extend the current bylaw, and you gave a reason why. Can we have that answer again and perhaps there's an opportunity for us to extend it in light of this extenuating circumstance?
Because the Education Act limits the term of a bylaw to a maximum of five years. So it's five years from the day it came into force. So these bylaws came in, sorry, this board's bylaw, the Halton Public Board, they came into force June 24, 2013. So the, June 24, 2013, that's when they came into force. So they'll expire midnight on June 23 of this year, which is midnight this Saturday. And there's no authority to extend it past, you have to pass a new bylaw or there's nothing.
And it's clear that we can't do that?
Yeah, we cannot. There's no authority to do that. You can amend the bylaws in other respects while it's in force, as we do every year, to increase the charge, but there's no authority to extend the term past five years. Good question. Let me think about that one.
Okay. Trustee Danko.
So Chair Ravenda, really, this is out of our control and really, the only thing that we can do tonight is pass the resolution on the proposed new bylaw and wait and see what happens. Is that correct?
So what, so I'm sorry, sir?
So the question is whether we can pass the resolution for the proposed bylaw. And we have suggested to take that action item off the agenda because we are not meeting all the requirements to do so and could get appealed if we do put a bylaw in place without the ministry's approval. It's a requirement through the regulation and Brad could potentially provide more detail.
So ministry approval is a condition precedent to passing the bylaw, so you cannot...
That was removed. Eight point one was removed.
Just to trustee Danko's point, and it's a good point, what can trustees do at this point? And I would say we need to reach out to the local MPPs and explain the situation. They may not be aware, the predicament that we are in. And hopefully, we can get this advanced and put on the top of the priority so that at least we shrink that window when we don't have an active bylaw.
And I believe also there was some talk about possibly the two chairs writing the letters, since the two directors have?
I was talking about that with the other director and they have their board meeting tomorrow night too, so I can find out if there's an appetite, if the board is willing here to have an appetite to do a joint letter from the chairs of both boards to the politicians, since staff, myself, and the director sent it to the ministry staff. It would seem appropriate that politician to politician would also carry some weight.
Thank you. Trustees, are you in favor of that? We have done that a number of times. Just raise your hand. We don't need a motion. Thank you. We've done that a number of times on other issues too. So perhaps we could work on that and you can talk to them? All right. Sorry. Helena, did you have a question? Sorry.
No, I was just going to suggest that, that we go on, isn't it?
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for our guests? No? All right. So remember us in your prayers.
Hopefully, next time we're here, we'll have a letter.
That would be lovely. Thank you so much for coming and appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you also, Mr. Issa. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So now we are moving on to, let me just see, the minutes. Six point one, the approval of the minutes, please, of June 5, 2018, regular board meeting. Trustee Ian Tomasi is moving. Seconder, please. Trustee Michael, any questions to the minutes? None? All in favor, please? Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right. Business arising from previous meetings. That was on page 17, which was way back before the, before the EDCs. All right. So now we are going into action item eight point two, the 2018-2019 budget. Trustee Danko.
Thank you, Chair Ravenda. I'd like to move the following resolution. Whereas the Ministry of Education guidelines are moving towards a requirement of 2% of provincial allocation to be maintained in the operating working funds reserve. And whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board Treasury is currently striving to achieve this target over the next five to seven years, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board's 2018-19 budget estimates bring the operating reserve to an amount of at least $4.8 million or about 1.2% of the Halton Catholic District School Board's provincial allocation.
Thank you. Seconded by Vice Chair Mari. Did you wish to speak to that, trustee Danko?
No, I think that it's all there in the motion. I just think that if this is a guideline that we're striving towards, to try to achieve it sooner rather than later.
Thank you. I have to ask the Superintendent Finance, is the EDC issue going to impact on that at all?
No, Madam Chair. The EDC revenue is what the ministry calls out of compliance. It's not the operating, part of the operating allocation or the provincial allocation. So it does not impact the score.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments to this issue? Trustee Intomasi.
Through you, Madam Chair. Perhaps Superintendent Nagoy could touch on the budget itself in terms of how this will impact any initiatives or incentives that we were looking at?
Certainly. So this motion required, I believe, an approximately 200,000 additional transfer into the operating reserve. And currently, we do have a surplus of over a million that we could transfer in into the reserve. We have, and we have a presentation coming up where we have identified certain additional cost reductions, additional revenue based on review of the current rentals and scheduled bookings that we have remaining, as well as a deferred purchase, whereby we have more than enough to bring that closer to a 5 million closing balance towards the end of this year. So I do believe it is doable. Looking at achieving the 2% provincial allocation would be approximately 7.3 million. That means we're currently 3.2 million away. So if we're going to be looking at around 800,000 transfer into that reserve annually, we could achieve that over four years. So 7 to 800,000 will bring us to four to five years to achieve that allocation. Of course, that will go slightly higher every year as the board continues to grow, so the provincial allocation also may increase as well.
Thank you. Anyone else got questions, comments? No? Ready for the vote? Okay. Trustee Quinn.
Oppose.
Trustee Anna Maria.
In favor.
Trustee Rose.
In favor.
Yes, you're not there yet. Okay. Yes. Trustee Christina.
In favor.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Vice Chair Mari.
In favor.
Trustee Tritz.
In favor.
Trustee Michael.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now moving on to eight point three, Policy I-40, performance appraisal of the Director of Education. Vice Chair Mari.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move, resolve the Halton Catholic District School Board, accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee, that Policy I-40, performance appraisal of Director of Education, be approved as amended.
Thank you. Seconded by trustee Quinn. Any questions, comments to that? And for our guests, the issues on policy have already passed through the Policy Committee. So this is really, I guess, a bit of a rubber stamp on it because we have discussed it at length. So all in favor? Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria.
In favor.
Trustee Rose.
In favor.
Trustee Christina.
In favor.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Vice Chair Mari.
In favor.
Trustee Tritz.
In favor.
Trustee Michael.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Thank you. And now to eight point four, Policy II-38, Educational Research Services and Pilot Projects. Vice Chair Mari.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move, resolve the Halton Catholic District School Board, accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee, that Policy II-38, Educational Research, surveys and pilot projects may be changed to Policy II-38, Educational Research, and be approved as amended.
Thank you. And a seconder, please. Trustee Intomasi. Any questions, comments to that? None? All right. We'll take the vote. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Michael.
In favor.
Trustee Tritz.
In favor.
Vice Chair Mari.
In favor.
Trustee Danko.
Favor.
Trustee Christina.
In favor.
Trustee Rose.
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria.
In favor.
Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Thank you. Eight point five, Policy IV-04, Loss or Damage to Personal Items. Vice Chair Mari.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Be it resolved the Halton Catholic District School Board, accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee, that Policy IV-04, Loss or Damage to Personal Items, be approved as amended.
Thank you. A seconder, please. Trustee Carabella. Any comments or questions to the issue? No? All right. Thank you. We'll take the vote then. Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria.
In favor.
Trustee Rose.
In favor.
Trustee Christina.
In favor.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Vice Chair Mari.
In favor.
Trustee Tritz.
In favor.
Trustee Michael.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Thank you very much. Eight point six, 2018-2019 budget estimates final. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees are presented with the final budget estimates for approval for 2018-19. This budget contains $370,000 in net increase to the surplus position of the board, of which 100,000 is an increase to the rental revenue and 270,000 is a decrease to the program enhancements that were proposed in the June 5 meeting report. This allows for a transfer of 800,000 into the operating reserve for a total of about 4.95 million closing balance into that reserve account. At this rate, we'll be, as I mentioned before, able to achieve our 2% goal of the provincial allocation over four years. The budget does not currently include any of the new initiatives that are also listed in this report. And they have been divided into a one-time cost versus ongoing cost for trustees' consideration for tonight in order to determine which ones of these are we going to be engaging in next year. And once we have that settled, we will amend the dollar value of the motion that says what budget amount trustees are approving for next year. So right now, the amount that is in the resolution is excluding all of the new initiatives. And Erin and Jay, our senior manager of financial services and the manager of budget and capital services, have presented a very short presentation just to provide a quick overview of what's included in the budget for next year.
Do you have the budget? Should the motion be on the floor or for us to...
The motion is on page 232, and it reads, "Resolved that Halton Catholic District School Board..."
It reads, "Resolved that Halton Catholic District School Board approves the 2018-19 budget estimates in the amount of $418,680,19." Nineteen? Okay. Nineteen, all right. So that is on the floor. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to move that.
Yes, go ahead. Seconder, please. Trustee... Trustee Intomasi. All right, so, gentlemen, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review our presentation on the budget. This is our final presentation on the budget for this year. Um, and we're gonna focus a lot on the changes from our last presentation from two weeks ago. So just look at our agenda quickly. We're gonna look at the budget updates from June fifth, staffing and program enhancements. The full list this time will be included on here, uh, the new initiatives, as well as the update on our, uh, board financial position. So the updates since our last meeting, what has changed? Well, we went back and we looked at our revenues again, and we looked at the use of our schools and our rentals, and we actually increased the, the forecast of these rentals or revenue by a hundred thousand dollars. This is a result of looking at prior year trends, uh, current revenue, and then remaining scheduled bookings. So that increases our, essentially, our surplus by an additional hundred thousand dollars. We also went back and looked at the survey results that we received, and we noticed that printing was an element that was consistently, um, reiterated in the survey. So we went back and then looked at our secondary and elementary printing budgets, and we focused on, primarily, on our elementary printing budgets, and realized that there was probably savings of approximately forty-five thousand dollars spread amongst all forty-six elementary schools. So we're going to implement that, or propose to implement that. We also looked at the central printing costs, or our departmental printing budgets, and we saw that there is a potential of savings of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars there. Finally, we looked at, it's one of our program enhancements right now, or at least it was brought up as a program enhancement, and it was for two hundred thousand dollars for religion textbooks. Well, these textbooks won't be ready until twenty eighteen, nineteen, so those have been, uh, removed as well from our program enhancements. So the result of all this, uh, expense decreases is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which again goes directly to our surplus. So just to some-
Just, uh, just to, on that point, the, uh, prior grade for religious textbook, it's already in the budget. We have had that in the budget, uh, every year, so that we can replace them. So grade six is in the budget, it's on schedule. The, the second grade for grade seven was added as a program enhancement in your table for next year. The textbooks will not be ready, uh, as we recently have learned, so we can, uh, decrease the program enhancements by that without, uh, compromising the purchase of the grade that we had planned in the budget to begin with.
So the net result is a increase of our surplus of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars additional revenue, and two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in savings. So again, looking at our staffing and our program enhancements, now, these have been items that we've brought forward to the board on, um, every occasion that we've met discussing our budget, our drafts and such, and nothing has changed on the staffing enhancements from our prior, um, prior meetings. But this does include everything. So last meeting, we had it kind of what we had before, and then the new items. This one is a complete, uh, summary of all the, uh, staffing enhancements. And the net total of all that would be about fourteen point six million dollars. Now, looking at our program enhancements, you're gonna see two items that are in red, and these are the two items we spoke about earlier, about the, uh, reduction in, in expenditures. There's a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, reduction, you can see in red there, um, and that is the textbooks that we just spoke of. And then the seventy thousand dollar reduction in printing, and, and those, as, as well as in red at the bottom. Everything else is the same, has been presented to board in past meetings. So new initiatives. These new initiatives haven't changed, uh, either since our last, uh, our last discussion. What we have done is we have separated, as trustee, uh, or Superintendent Nagoy mentioned earlier, um, we've separated it from one-time expenditures, meaning an expense only for this budget period, and then an ongoing expenditure, which would be an expenditure in succession, uh, successive budgets. Now, the one item that I did in blue there, and it's kinda hard to see, you can't do one without the others. You can see it's electronic file project, and I have it written in brackets, related to ongoing expense, and conversely, if you look at the ongoing expense, it's also in blue, it's related to the one-time expense. So you kinda have to do both of those in conjunction, um, as well.
And just on this slide, uh, trustees had mentioned, uh, at the last meeting, if we could prioritize these, uh, new initiatives, and we've had a discussion on it, and it is very hard to do so, because they're unique in their own way, and they're all important to the system, and that's why they are part of this shortlist. So instead of doing that and sort of, you know, picking one off, uh, over the other, we've put them in the perspective of a one-time versus an ongoing commitment, uh, and they're up for trustees', uh, consideration tonight.
So where's our financial position after making these adjustments? Well, looking at this, we've seen this one before. The in-year change is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's almost like our, it's our checking account. We have five hundred and fifty, five thousand dollars in our checking account. We have our capital reserve of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have our operating reserve to address, uh, the motion that was, uh, approved tonight. You can see that the motion was to be about four point eight million dollars in our closing balance. We're at four point nine, and the reason it's a little bit higher is because instead of, um, the two hundred thousand dollars, we were able to go back and find an extra three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then the other items on that page have not changed since our past, uh, since our past meetings.
And in top number, um, the operating surplus, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, so that's seventy thousand higher than, uh, the prior reports. The reason is we've divided the three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in net savings by adding three hundred thousand to the operating reserve, so bringing that up from five hundred to eight hundred, and added the rest just on the top line. It can be reallocated. Uh, that is, that's one line that will sort of balance everything, so it can be reallocated to any needs. So there's five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars available, not allocated, that can be applied towards the new initiatives, and, uh, that will be decreased. So say we add three hundred thousand in new initiatives, then they become a cost, the cost increases, so that line at the top will become two hundred and fifty-five instead of five hundred and fifty-five, and we will be adjusting the, uh, budget amount accordingly by adding the three hundred thousand dollars, for example, in costs to it. So I think as, uh, next steps, we do have to submit the approved budget to the ministry by June twenty-ninth, and before we do that, we wanted to open it up to trustees to determine what are the additional new initiatives that you would consider for next year, and what is the budget that we approve tonight.
Thank you. Trustees, Vice Chair Moray.
One clarification. Um, the, the new government, um, clarified that they would like, uh, I guess ministries or the government to stop, uh, on hiring. Uh, the, the, the new premier clarified that that doesn't affect frontline, uh, individuals today, like, like teachers, for instance. Have you any, have you had any communication with the Ministry of Education to clarify that everything is in line, what the new government's looking at?
That's an excellent question. Uh, yes, we've had a discussion with, uh, the ministry, uh, staff and other superintendents of business across the province, uh, especially the growing boards are in, in our, uh, situation as well. The direction is for the, um, the ministries only. It does not extend to consolidated entities such as school boards. So in our case, um, it does not impact school board staff, uh, one way or another. That was the, the update that we received, actually, today, the clarification.
Thank you. Trustee Danko.
Uh, Chair Rabenda, through you to the Treasurer. Just looking at page two hundred and thirty-three of the package and, um, looking at our actuals, our actual budget from two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, and our total, our total budget was three hundred and eighty million dollars, four hundred and forty-five. So in just two years, our estimate is to be four hundred and eighteen million. And that's almost forty million dollars in just two years. And our enrollment has not increased by that much. So I would just like the Treasurer to explain what, you know, obviously, this must be additional personnel or facilities of, of some kind. So can, can she allocate that forty million dollars over two years? Uh, what it went into?
Yes, absolutely. Um, one is attributed to growth. Uh, another factor that we increased is we were on the receiving side when the ministry reallocated funding, so the same pot of money across the province for special education allocation, the, um, school board, the administration grant. Um, there have been additional, um, changes in providing the, uh, new census data for two thousand and eleven, a national household, uh, survey, and as soon as that was, um, in, in two thousand and sixteen, respectively, for the current year. Once that data has been applied to the formula, there's additional funding with the, um, most notably in the language grant and, uh, the demographic grant as part of the learning, uh, opportunities grant. Uh, the other pieces are additional investments in the system for a two-year term, so two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, there have been, through, um, negotiations, uh, additions in what was called the, um, local priority funding. So there was additional staffing funded for various employee groups for the, the two, the two years that I mentioned. So that is also included in the legislative revenue, and then in the next Schedule A two will be part of the classroom staffing, support staffing, depending on where they fall. Um, I believe that it's around three point five million, uh, four million a year or so. Uh, the current year, there's been some additional pots of money, uh, also avail, made available for multidisciplinary teams, for special education, uh, mental health, uh, as well as, uh, uh, student, um, uh, achievement for, um, planning for success in, at the secondary panel, so providing guidance to grade seven and eight. So there's been a lot of different, um, additions to the education sector, uh, in addition to just, uh, pure growth. But we are also growing very rapidly, uh, almost a thousand students, uh, every year. Part of this funding is also, uh, the increased, uh, other revenues, which includes, um, uh, an increase to, uh, what we receive from the federal government, the, uh, increase in the international student, uh, program, uh, rental, and so forth. So that's also a portion of this.
Uh, trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the, the finance has, um, taken a good look at, um, the questions that we asked them to look at for, uh, efficiencies, and, uh, they have found efficiencies. And the new initiatives that, um, are, are here for our consideration, uh, were very clearly explained in previous meetings, and so, um, I'm willing to support, uh, both the, uh, one-time expenses and the ongoing expenses in the new initiatives. And, uh, so I'd like to know how the Chair would like to handle that.
Thank you. Did I get a move and seconder on this? Or did, didn't I? Yeah? Okay, so we're, yes?
I'd like to move an amendment to the budget.
Okay. Go ahead.
Like to move to amend the budget state, budget resolution to, uh, after the phrase "budget estimates." So, so therefore, it would read, and to add the text, excluding administrative staff positions from Table Two, the Human Resources and Equity Advisor and the Financial Officer for the Thomas Merton Center, uh, and then adjusting the, the budget amount accordingly. Yeah, so it would re, it would read, "Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the twenty eighteen, nineteen budget estimates, excluding admin staff positions from Table Two, Human Resource and Equity Advisor and Financial Officer," in the amount of, and then a corresponding reduction in the, in the budget amount. So I, I would like a seconder for that, possibly.
Okay. Excluding admin staff positions, and the other one, sco, again?
Uh, two, two admins staff positions.
Yeah.
So the one described as Human Resources Equity Officer.
Equity Officer.
And the other one described as Financial, uh, it, Financial Officer for the Thomas Merton Center.
And Financial Officer for the Thomas Merton Center. Okay. Uh, you want a seconder for that?
Yes, please.
I'll ask Superintendent Nagoy to speak to that, but, um, if there's anyone that wants to second it before we get there? No seconder? Vice Chair Moray seconding that? Okay, could you speak to that, please?
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, trustee Danko, the Human Rights and Equity Advisor is, uh, non-negotiable. That is being funded through the ministry, and we're, we're in that Toronto region where we're required to have that position in place, so, um, that wouldn't be, uh, that wouldn't be a valid amendment for that particular position.
Respectfully, Chair, I spoke to the Chair of, uh, OCSDA about this, and those positions are not mandated. Some of the larger boards do have them, but, um, it's not a man, it's not been mandated. And I would like to see the memo or regulation that does so.
Uh, this is not an unusual thing. We hear many times about equity officers being mandated. Uh, Madam Director.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair. I do have a memo from the ministry, and, uh, we've already had our conversations. We've been told exactly, um, the kind of people that would apply, um, and we were asked to prepare our, uh, our job positions for posting, so, uh, they expect that to be in place by September in the new school year. There's not, we're, the Toronto region and Thunder Bay region are the mandated two regions that are starting this off, and then depending on the feedback and what happens in these regions, after the people are trained and working in our boards, they plan to extend that to, uh, the rest of the, the boards. It's under the, uh, Equity Secretariat of the Ministry of Education.
All right, so you heard this from someone at OCSDA? All right, so a trustee. You heard it from a trustee? Okay, well, I think we have to go with the director. Go ahead.
There would be boards who would not be involved.
Okay.
So if they're not in the Toronto region, then they're not, they're not part of, of that.
So is your person in the Toronto region?
Chair, who, who says we're in the Toronto region? Toronto is Toronto.
Well, we, uh, we are.
Designated, um-
Compared with Thunder Bay, we're in the Toronto area.
The Ministry of Education divides the whole entire, uh, province into regions. We, there's the two Halton, Halton Public, Halton Catholic, Upper Grand, Wellington, Peel, Duffin Peel, Toronto and Toronto Catholic make up the Toronto region. So all of those boards are being funded, along with all the boards in the Thunder Bay region. I don't know all the names of them, but those are the boards being funded for this position.
Vice Chair Moray.
Yeah, my, my suggestion would be that we, um, get clarification on this, and appreciate the Director's comments on it, um, you know, and, and, and obviously, uh, hear from the ministries' priorities in the, in the months to come, and then, uh, we can make a decision on that specific position, once we get clarity on, on if we're required or, or not, and then, uh, bring it back in September if it's, if it, if we're mistaken in, in how it's, uh, how it's dealt with. And, and as for, and I don't know if there are any comments on the other par, portion of the, uh, the amendment.
My question, uh, to item B of trustee Danko's amendment was, what is the role of the Financial Officer at Merton as prescribed, and how does that differ from the role of a principal in taking care of the finances of a, of a typical school?
Madam Chair, um, so, th- that position there, we can only look at half of it. Half is federally funded. They, um, with the increase in federal programs at Thomas Merton, it's a very different type of school. It's not your typical secondary school. It has various funding sources and various, um, programs, various, um, uh, student base that they are trying, that demand, that they're trying to address. Uh, we do currently have a financial, um, analyst, uh, located there with all the growth. The federal grant has, uh, the, the federal, um, program has granted, uh, additional money, uh, including, uh, funding a half-time. So that is really off the table, that half will stay in the budget. The other half was our, um, recommendation in addressing the continuing education, um, audit that we currently had, um, and trustees have it attached in their in-camera package to the, uh, Audit Committee Report that we didn't get a chance to, to, um, get to yet. we didn't get a chance to get to yet. So without really going into detail, one of the areas there was addressed by a full-time person. I strongly would recommend that we go ahead and add that person to provide assistance for budgeting and forecasting and the reporting that is required for all those agencies, as well as our daily programs that we have out of that location. So it was estimated somewhere around the 60 mark, 60,000-plus benefits. So it, around that, about 80. Half of that is funded federally, so we're looking only at the half. Having a half-time finance officer is not as efficient as having a full-time or potentially finding the same caliber of a person to hire. So I would recommend considering to add the additional half. That program, that is the daily program as well, that's the other half for growth, has been growing over the last years. It's quite significant and I do think it's time that we looked at providing that support. All right. So out of the two positions, one and a half of those positions are covered. They're provided either by the province or by the federal government. So Trustee Danko, do you wish to withdraw your motion?
No, I wish to have a vote on it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I just sent to the trustees the memo from the ministry with the Human Rights and Equity Advisor.
All right. So trustees, right now because of our technologically literate director there, you have it on your phones or on your devices, you have the memo from the ministry indicating that we will have an equity officer and it will be funded. Okay? Go ahead.
And Madam Chair, just before the vote, my only concern is this amendment, the resolution, and then you're looking at the amended resolution. We haven't discussed the new initiatives. Are they off the table? Can we discuss those as well before we make all the amendments to the motion? That's my only concern.
The amendments to the resolution will have to include everything that we're putting in the budget, anything that we're excluding from the budget, and I would have to be able to total that. And then that's the amount that we would go in. Because it has to say the amount that you're approving, I have to send that to the ministry. So. But can you do that right now if we say yes to this and no to that?
Yes, because we'll say, for example, take out $40,000 and include, you know, $300,000 and then, so it's a net of 260. We add 260 to that and I would give you what the number would be. But I do need to know what the trustees are approving or not approving of the new initiatives, if any.
All right. So do we need a further amendment there to include? Yes, this is the amendment from Trustee Danko, but do we need?
I will have another amendment regarding the new initiatives once this is handled.
Okay, we're going to do it that way? Okay, you're good with that? That's okay with you? All right, anything else? No? Trustee Quinn.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the letter the Director had sent through to us, and I see that funding is made available, but I don't see a directive that we must hire a Human Rights Officer. That's what I'm trying to figure out, if there's a directive or if there is an announcement that funding is available and we can look forward to it.
We've had two teleconferences on this issue where the Secretariat was actually speaking with all the directors and Human Resources. This is a goal. There's, this is not really negotiable at this point.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that if it's something that is probably forthcoming and being that we don't know what's going to happen in the next election and we're going to have a new director, I don't think it's fair to take something out of the budget that the next board is going to have to deal with. I think it's fair to leave it in and if they don't use it, you can defer it or move it away or take it out next year, but I think it should go in to be prudent moving forward so that we're not putting the next board in jeopardy of not having the money where it's supposed to be.
Yes, one and a half out of two are funded. So are we ready for the vote on this then? Okay? Read it over. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approves the 2018-19 budget estimates in the amount of eight hun, 400, I'm sorry, in the amount of 418,680,019 dollars. And excluding staff, excluding administrative staff positions of Human Resources Equity Officer and Financial Officer for the Thomas Merton Center. I believe that's how it's read. Are we good on that? All right, we're good on that. Okay, so we're going to take the vote. Trustee Caribella.
In favor.
You're supporting the motion with the changes, yes? Okay. Trustee Ingrid?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Michael?
Opposed.
Trustee Tritz?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Marais?
Opposed.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
Opposed.
Trustee Rowe?
Opposed.
Trustee Anna Maria?
Opposed.
Trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
Okay, how many opposed do you have? Five opposed, so it's opposed, it dies. All right. Trustee Rowe, forgot your name for a second. Trustee, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, please, that the total new investments be included in the final amount for the budget estimates.
Can we please clarify that this respectfully lists every item on Table Four that my fellow board member is asking to be included in the budget? Is that how I understand?
The word "total" is at the bottom.
Well, Table Four, all the line items in Table Four, new initiatives, is that what
Do we have a second for that, please? Trustee Intomasi? Yep, okay. Any questions, concerns to that, any discussion? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. So this amendment really does nothing more than put through what the original resolution was, but we were here on the board discussing these additional items and then perhaps other things to be found in the budget, other savings to be found in the budget. And to that matter, I'd like to ask the Director of Education again about the non-union job evaluation review program and then the officer that goes with that for a one-year contract. That's a total of $200,000. And understanding that it is another ministry ask that we do this, I see it as taking money away from potential investment in the classrooms specifically, and I'm wondering if there's somewhere else we could put that $200,000 to better use at this time.
No, the ministry is not funding that and it's not a requirement, but as Superintendent O'Hara has said on many occasions, we're lagging behind in terms of doing a good thorough job of evaluating our positions and we haven't done it in over four or five years. So this is, it's time to do this again. Not that, you know, anything will come of it, but it's time to review our job positions, our language in the positions, but it's not ministry-funded. This is coming from our budget.
And could, through you, Madam Chair, could the Director remind me how many non-union staff we're talking about that this review would be encompassing?
Over 100.
So potentially we could just give a $2,000 raise to everyone and save this money being spent on a consultant?
Through you, Madam Chair. Not necessarily. When we've, when job evaluations are done in the past, sometimes they don't necessarily result in raises. In fact, they result in red circling because the job has changed.
Question, Chair Rubenda. So if the, if we are hiring under Table Two, we're hiring 11 CYCs and 13 educational assistants, then how do we actually need additional commissioners? Well, I'm thinking that we have extra people in the school to deal with students and there's a higher staff-to-student ratio overall. How can commissioners, do we still need commissioners with almost 20 or over 20 new staff?
Through you, Madam Chair. Our commissioners, I think we've spoken about the level of supervision. It just enhances, especially in secondary. That's the only place where commissioners are currently in place. Our schools are three floors. It's to enhance the work that teachers do and all the staff. But these CYCs and EAs are actually working with, directly with students, specific students assigned to them. They're not in the general population doing supervision to ensure safety in our schools.
Would, Superintendent Penelly? I was going to ask Superintendent Brown for the special needs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Trustee Danko, commissioners are there for the safety and supervision of students in halls and cafeterias and outside. And again, it's for secondary, it's not for elementary, to ensure that we have safe learning environments for all. Your mention of EAs and mention of additional staffing, those individuals, again, as Director Dawson said, they are dealing directly with students. They are not on supervision in the cafeterias, out in the halls, in the parking.
Are those CYCs and EAs, are they for elementary? Do you know? Superintendent Penelly?
It's a combination of both. They will be both in elementary and in secondary.
Thank you.
My understanding was that the CYCs would be allocated towards secondary because that was a deficiency last year where we removed the CYCs from the high schools.
So I'm not sure, Trustee, Vice Chairman Marais?
Yep. So just speaking from one of our past meetings, when we looked at this new initiatives, we did ask the staff for two things. One was for a listing or ranking of everything, which I know was brought up in the presentation. They couldn't rank what was important and what was not because there's varying degrees on who thinks what's important. But we also asked for, I guess, a corresponding reduction in other savings, which I think you found 300,000, if I'm not mistaken. So is there a, like, is there, we asked for direction from you or for thoughts from you as to, you know, what is most important? If you found $300,000 in savings in the budget, which of these $300,000 of new initiatives would staff like to look at?
Madam Chair, my understanding was not that the savings in the budget should cover all the new initiatives that go in because we have the unallocated surplus at the top of, on the top line. So we currently have 555,000, which is more than the 482 available, and that won't impact what goes into our commitment for the operating and capital reserve. What I took away is that trustees were looking in the 200, 250,000 range in terms of some savings and, you know, additional reductions. You know, I didn't take it as the amount of identified savings would be the amount of new initiatives going in. I do believe they are all important. There, it's not a very long list compared to the fact that we have a 418,000 million, 418 million budget. But again, it is up to the trustees which ones get approved or not and what remains on that top line in the budget.
Yes, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. Because all of the new initiatives were important and I would align them to the goals in our strategic plan, especially the efficiencies for the foundational elements. When we look at the electronic file project, paper is costing, as printing, paper costs money and to store paper back and forth in our, and we don't have a basement. We don't have a basement here. Portables don't have a basement where most of us work. So we have to spend that money off-site and store files on our students, which we're required by legislation to keep for numerous years, as well as personnel files plus finance files. So becoming electronic and doing that work will, I know, Trustee Quinn was asking about the cloud and the cost of the cloud, and eventually we would be saving money and that would be efficient and that would align with our foundational elements in our strategic plan. I know Trustee Quinn also asked our chief librarian what we could do to support his work, and there it is, the implementation of the new library system. New music equipment supports the achieving of our students. And commissioners that we asked for supports the safe and belonging in our strategic plan. So we tried to make sure that we covered all the areas in what we're looking for and aligning it in our strategic plan. So that's why we didn't rank them and we're asking you to do that work.
Trustees? Trustee Rowe?
Madam Chair, could I ask that you call the vote on the amendment?
Now, this is the amendment, let's just see now, the total of the new initiatives as listed in Table Four of the report dated tonight's date, June 19th. That's how it sits right now. Any comments? Any questions? No? Okay. Trustee Quinn?
I'm looking forward to further discussion, so I'm voting no right now.
I'm sorry?
I'm opposed.
Opposed? Thank you. Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
Opposed.
Vice Chairman Marais?
Opposed.
Trustee Tritz?
Opposed.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Caribella?
Opposed.
Five-three, it fails. All right. One at a time, okay. So you want to go back to, we're going to have to do them one at a time because we do have to get this ready for submission. Trustee Quinn?
I'm wondering if, through you, Madam Chair, if the Treasurer could update me on the proposed increase of $40,000 in travel and mileage expenses that is substantially more than the last previous years. What accounts for that $40,000 increase?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's the increase overall in our board and staff, as well as we had last year halfway through the year adopted the CRA rate, which were 20%. So this next year, we are filling the full amount of that 20% increase based on what we were paying before and what the CRA had suggested that boards apply after they had performed an audit of one of the schools and mandated that they go with the CRA rate. So the bulk of that is capturing the change in the rate for mileage.
Vice Chairman Marais?
I have an amendment similar to Trustee Danko's, but it's just in regards to the financial officer. So though I understand half of it's funded, which is fine, I think we should start off with that half for a half-time position and then we can grow, if we find it makes sense from a growth perspective or if it's adding value to the board, we can move from there. So my motion is to, you know, simply have it as 0.5 and the similar reduction in the budget, correct, $41,000 reduction in the budget. I'm not sure if I have a second for that.
How much are we saving on that? If we cut it to 0.5?
$41,000.
$41,000, okay. A second, Trustee Caribella, were you seconding? Seconding in that? Okay. Any comments to that? Trustee Intomasi?
Through you, Madam Chair. We are sitting here and going through item by item and looking at 5,000 here, 10,000 there. You know, we're looking at playing around with the safety in our schools, we're playing around with not having efficient systems. In the meantime, we're throwing tens of thousands of dollars over the sanctity of life motion, over having, whether a trustee goes in Milton or Oakville, and nobody's discussing those legal fees and we've had trustees go to Europe. So I think, I think we should, I think we should let our staff do the job they're supposed to do. We've asked them to find efficiencies, they have found efficiencies. They continually go back and find efficiencies. And meeting after meeting, we sit here and we listen to this, whether we're going to split one position into 0.5. I am sorry, I'm not in favor. I am sorry, I'm not in favor.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? All right. So, is there anything else, are we going to vote on that amendment to that? Whose amendment is this? Paul, could you read your amendment for me again, please?
To reduce the financial officer to the point five that is funded, that is already funded, with the similar reduction in the board budget of forty-one thousand dollars.
All right. Anyone else want to speak to that? Okay. We'll take the vote. You had a second, didn't you, Paul? Oh, that's right, of course. Trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
Opposed.
Trustee Christina?
Opposed.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Ingrid?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Four-four, and I'm opposed. It loses. Okay. Next. Yes?
I'd like to amend the budget to include music equipment. For now.
Just music equipment. All right, so we have another amendment to include music equipment. How much money is the music equipment? Forty-five thousand, okay. All right, well, it's a lot less than some other things we've talked about tonight. Okay, a second, do we have a second? It's an amendment.
Yeah.
Only include that?
For now, I mean, there could be other amendments.
Can we, are there any other things we could add in here? Is there anything else we could add in besides the music, so we can move faster? Trustee Trites? Go ahead. You're seconding. Okay. Paul already did it, I think, yes, but thank you. We'll keep with the next one. Is there anything else you want to add in, so we don't go through each? Yes?
Through you, Madam Chair. My main concern here is, as I said, the two hundred thousand dollars being spent for this evaluation officer in a time of trustees looking for savings. I think that money should be invested, not in another employee, but in the budget of the school, whether it's into the operations budget or into reserves. But I'm moving that we do not include the requested job evaluation review officer in the contract.
I don't think it's all two hundred thousand, is it? Is it? But there's... Yes, there is. No, I didn't think it was all of that, okay. All right, so where are we at? We're at the music.
Call a vote.
Hmm?
Call a vote on music.
I'm sorry?
Call a vote on music.
Yes, I will. I just wanted to see what else we could put in there. All right. One at a time, okay. Anyone else want to speak to the music? Nope? All right, all in. Trustee Quinn? Are you in favor of music?
I'm in favor of music.
Okay. Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee, Vice Chairman Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Okay, we have all got music. Next. Have a long night. Next. Anything else you wish to include? Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the budget to include the library system.
No conflict, eh? Library system. How much is the library system?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, all right.
One time.
One time. Seconding it is trustee Quinn. Any questions or comments to the library system for eighty-five thousand? Okay. Calling the vote, trustee Carabella?
Favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
It's the arts and culture night, so in favor.
Okay. Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else you would like to add in? Mark, sorry. Trustee Row?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to amend the budget to include electronic file projects, both of them.
Both electronic file projects? Two components, and that is the fifty-five?
There's a fifty-five, one-time purchase of licensing and fifty-five thousand to annual ongoing cost, which is the estimate for the entire system being up and running, so that's the maximum amount.
So, for this year, for this year, it will be a hundred and ten for this first year? For the first year, one-ten, seconded by trustee Danko. Any comments to that? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Next.
Vote to include the commissioners. I'm moving, I'm making a motion to include commissioners in the budget.
Seconded by, any questions for the commissioners? All right, so we're voting, trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you, we now have commissioners. What next? The non-union job evaluation, this is an officer. That's two hundred thousand. Is that a one-time expense?
Yes.
Okay, so we won't need it again for a number of years? Okay. All right, yes. Question, yes?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the treasurer, to the director. Are there any other suggestions or deficiencies in the budget where that two hundred thousand dollars could be used?
Currently, we have identified the needs for next year. So, I do believe we have a strong surplus position, and I have to say proudly so, considering we are the lowest-funded board, English, Catholic, public, everything together. We're still the lowest-funded board in the province, and we do have, remind me, Erin, the next slide, the previous slide, we have the financial position, a total of one point five million, one point five million dollars surplus currently. So, if it's not approved, it's a one-time, so it's only a one-year, and that will allow us to evaluate, based on the market study where our positions compare, then it will just go at the top of this line and make it one point seven million at this point.
Well, then, that's my motion, that we move this to the top of that line and make it one point seven, rather than spending it on a bureaucratic position for one year.
This is the last item left. So, if you want, if you want to just leave it out, that's fine, if that's the will of the board. But I don't think we have to, we don't have to vote on it, because it's not in, right? We could vote to exclude it. That would be a different motion. I'm not sure. What's your complete motion?
My motion was to remove it from Table Four and take that two hundred thousand dollars to the operating surplus.
Okay. All right, so we voted on everything else, and everything else is in and finished, right? Okay. I don't want to lose what we've done. Okay. So, do you have a second? Trustee Danko? Anyone wish to speak to that? Trustee Carabella?
I guess I had my hand up, and I didn't notice when you're asking for other things. I was remembering with Dr. Brendan Brown last year or a year before, that he asked for money for extra assessments to help the special needs assessments speed up, and I didn't notice that this year, and I'm wondering if we've talked about it or where that's at for our special needs community.
We've talked about that at CAC, and I believe Dr. Brown's comments, and please correct me if I'm wrong, CAC people, were that we are doing okay right now? Yeah, yes, a lot of additions, go ahead.
There's a number of additions in the budget. There's a total of three point six million increase to the special education budget. A portion of that is for multidisciplinary teams, which include additional staffing to reduce the wait times for assessment. So, there's quite a lot of staffing and resources that has been added in the budget to address that need. That's why it's not an additional need identified on its own, but it has been addressed.
All right, so we're back to trustee Quinn's motion.
And perhaps just a follow-up to my motion, my amendment, to superintendent O'Hara. Do we not have the capacity to at least begin this process internally and do it over a few years period, rather than having to have someone come in full-time and take this on?
Again, through the chair, we have been limping along, trying to deal with just new jobs that are coming in to the system, because we are growing, and significantly changed jobs. We do not have the staffing, the capacity to go and do a thorough review of all of the non-union positions. The simplest way, again, is on a regular cycle, is to hire a consultant to go and do that task. Then, it's a one-shot cost that happens every, usually between every five to seven years, rather than taking on additional staff. There is not the staffing to be able to continue to limp along. This was deferred last year. It needs to be done in order to go and make sure that our jobs are up to date in terms of its evaluation, and ultimately, that we're compliant with all the various pieces of the legislation. This is something that needs to happen. It's been deferred a year. We are in that period now where there is significant number of jobs within our organization that has changed because of time and technology, and it needs to be looked at. We need to do this task. Thank you.
All right. So, who was the second on trustee Quinn's motion? Trustee Danko, anybody else want to speak to it? No? All right, ready for the vote? Okay, trustee Quinn? Trustee Anna Maria?
Opposed.
Trustee Row?
Opposed.
Trustee Christina?
Opposed.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Trites? Trustee Michael?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Ingrid?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Hmm? It passes. All right, so we do not get that individual, that program. All right. So, are we done here with the budget? Main motion? Okay.
So, the total, so the resolution would be that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget estimates in the amount of, I'm waiting for my stuff, I don't have my calculator.
That's okay. Can I count your fingers, huh?
Sorry. Four hundred eighteen million, nine hundred sixty-two thousand and nineteen dollars.
Four eight two, nine six two, zero one nine?
No, four one eight.
Four one eight.
Maybe a few years, four eight two, but right now...
Four one eight, okay.
Four one eight.
All right. So, resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the two eighteen, two nineteen budget estimates in the amount of four hundred and eighteen million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand and nineteen dollars. A mover, please. Trustee Quinn? But it kept moving. Oh, you don't want to put down the amount? Yeah, I'd rather have the amount in. Resolved that the board approved the budget as that amount. I want to be sure that we all know what the amount is. So, a mover, trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Danko. Any more questions? Fortunately, no, okay. We'll take the vote, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
Favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to our staff in the business and finance department. That's a big job. All right, so eight point seven, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen year-end audit planning report from KPMG. Trustee Row, the chair of the audit committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The KPMG reviewed the provider report from last year on the, sorry? Report from last year on the topics that we've discussed, which are listed in your report there, as well as the appendices, and provided the draft financial statements and the audit findings that we presented at the audit committee on November the fifteenth, and will go to the board for approval. A year-end checklist showing the chronology of events, and the ministry memorandum showing the financial statements to be released in September and forwarded to the board. And finally, the completed Education Finance Information System forms that are due. So, I'd like to move that resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the external auditors two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen year-end audit planning report.
Thank you, a second to my vice chair, Murray? Yes? Yes, okay. All right. Any questions, comments to the report to the audit committee? Everything's very clear. All right, we'll take the vote. Trustee Quinn? Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Vice Chairman Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, which is eight point eight, the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen internal audit plan. Trustee Row?
So, this is the plan that was approved by the audit committee for next year to be audited, and the, as listed in the report, the areas to be audited are health and safety and privacy. So, I would like to move, resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendations of the audit committee to approve the internal audit plan for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and resolve that the internal audit plan for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen include the following audits, health and safety and privacy.
Thank you, a second please. Trustee Trites? Any questions, comments to the motion? No? Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Row. Can you tell me what other items were considered for adding to the plan for next year? And if there were any, why were they not included?
Superintendent Nagoy can help me with this, but we have a schedule of all the different areas that need to be audited, and these ones, it's time that they came up.
Also, in the package in Appendix A, it listed the topics that are suggested for the following year, so it's usually a two-year plan, and it's subject to review every year based on a risk assessment that is being completed between the regional internal audit manager, senior staff, and with the audit committee. One aspect that was discussed, I believe, was the international students program, and whether an audit of the fees and revenues would be warranted. The process was discussed that we go through and how they are tracked, so it's similar to our enrollment. We have, every fee is attached to the person that is registered, is registered in Trillium. So, there's a lot of checks and balances, and then the audit committee decided to go ahead with the proposed topics from the regional internal auditor for the next two years, with review again for year two. They could change.
And with the International Students, privacy would be included in their audit.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, do we get a move in a second or? Only Mark? Okay, a second or please. Susan, I had Susan, of course I did, yeah. I should write this down. All right, so no more questions. Okay, we'll take the vote. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Michael.
In favor.
Trustee Tritz.
In favor.
Vice Chair Murray.
In favor.
Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Trustee Christina.
In favor.
Trustee Roe.
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria.
In favor.
Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Thank you very much. Now we're going into Staff Reports, nine point one, Stakeholder Feedback Regarding Policy V dash zero four Fundraising. Superintendent Overholt.
To you, Madam Chair. The following report is being presented to trustees this evening based on Resolution Number ninety-one eighteen, which was adopted at the March twentieth Regular Board Meeting. And this resolution required that amendments in Resolution Number sixty-one eighteen, approved at the February twentieth Regular Board Meeting, be incorporated into Policy V oh four and released for stakeholder input. Before I provide a brief summary, I would like to acknowledge our Chief Researcher, Dr. Collum Moore, and particularly her Research Department, of which two are here this evening, for the extensive time they dedicated in order to put together the report, which is attached as Appendix A. The amount of feedback we received was much greater than the norm that we usually do, but they were able to go through this thoroughly, the entire feedback, and create the report that you have before you. Brief summary, feedback was gathered in a number of formats, our usual online stakeholder feedback form used with policies and emails. Catholic school councils were invited to share their feedback on a separate forum, a small group activity undertaken at the Council of Chairs meeting on May twenty-third, and delegations presented to the Board of Trustees at various Board Meetings. Again, Appendix A is provided as a summary and analysis of all the feedback that is provided in the report for trustees. A quick overview of the information, the online email feedback, a total of nine hundred and ninety-two responses. Twenty-one percent of the responses were in favor of the changes to the policy and procedure, and seventy-four percent of the respondents were opposed. Themes were identified for both the support responses as well as the opposed responses, a total of five themes for in favor, and a total of eleven for the opposed. Again, all responses are included in Appendix B for this area. The Catholic School Council feedback, forty-three of the fifty-four school councils responded. The findings are provided in Appendix A, which provides percentages of those councils that agree and disagree with each amended area of the policy and procedure, as well as an open-ended response area. All school council responses are included in Appendix C. The small group activity at the Council of Chairs meeting on May twenty-third, thirty-four table responses were submitted with three main themes identified, concern over the proper process being followed for changing the policy and procedure, Catholic values being upheld, and wanting the freedom to donate to organizations of their choice that benefit others in society. All of these responses are available in Appendix D. And as well, twenty-nine delegations, as mentioned before, were presented at various Board Meetings. So the attached appendices are provided to trustees along with the staff report as per Resolution Number ninety-one eighteen for discussions for trustees.
Thank you very much and appreciate all the work that has been done by Dr. Collum on the Research Department. It's a huge job, important though. Any questions or comments to the staff report? Trustee Quinn.
Perhaps a question through you, Madam Chair, to the Policy Chair on what the plan is to, and as we had, I think, decided to do was to take the feedback that we received here and then to bring it to policy. So when can we look to discuss it in a policy meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. And I mentioned, we gave a little bit more time for staff to compile such a massive amount of information before the last policy meeting. It's now compiled. We made sure it was at this meeting so that the public could, you know, see the feedback that we received. But the intention is, well, what we will do is at the next policy meeting, the policy will be on that agenda, and trustees can make whatever decisions they would like on that policy in any way they see fit.
And that, I believe, is September the eleventh, the next policy. Any other questions? Trustee Carabella.
Would it then be foreseen to go to the September eighteenth Board Meeting for a vote?
It depends on the decision of the Policy Committee if changes to the current policy are made.
I don't have a second question, no.
So in light of their responses and the work that's being done, and in the interest of having a policy in place and having some certainty as to what that policy will be by the start of the school year, could we look at having those discussions sometime over the summer and then coming back before the school year starts so that everyone knows what the policy is going forward for the school year?
You would have to have a special meeting of the Policy Committee to do that.
And if I may, Madam Chair, it's, you know, certainly, I think, it's important to have certainty when it comes to policies. The current policy, the old policy is in place right now. In order to actually change the policy of the Board, we wouldn't just have to have a policy meeting. That policy would then have to go to a special Board Meeting to be changed as well. So it's, I hear what you're saying, but it's a multi-step approach on it.
Through you, Madam Chair. Further to what trustee Murray is saying, I'm also thinking, given the suggestions, and there's a lot of good ones in here, I can see if we get back to Policy Committee that we may want to implement some of the changes and suggestions. And if we do something like that over the summer, staff is on vacation at that time. So, I mean, if we got to, even if we had a special policy meeting, it would then have to go back to staff for revision, and that could take time, and I don't know that we would really get that achieved over the summer months.
Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure what the schedule of vacations is with the staff, but I presume they're not all off the entire length of summer. And the other point, that I'd hate to see this, well, it's a hockey term, ragging the puck, taking a long time to come to a resolution if we are to come to something. And I'd like trustees to work over the summer on this, if possible, and have some direction for staff going into the new year.
There's quite a bit of material there, so certainly there's plenty for trustees to work on at their own pace or according to their own schedules over the summer. I'm already seeing that we have several special meetings of the Board being touted around, and I know I'll be having one of my own. So it's going to be an unusually busy summer. But if there's a motion for a special policy meeting, then I'll take the motion.
Well, through you, Madam Chair. What is the procedure for bringing a policy meeting, a special policy meeting, to place? I don't think it is just a vote of the Board, is it?
We, as a committee of the whole of the Board, you know, we have done it in a slightly less formal way than we have with Board Meetings of the Board. So if the majority of members of the Policy Committee would like to meet, or feel it's better to meet in July or August, or maybe get a start on it at the end of August, just so we have some more information, you know, we could agree as a group to do that.
So through you, Madam Chair, then if you could perhaps take a show of hands, I'd like to propose a special meeting in July.
I would like a motion. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we convene a meeting of the Policy Committee at a suitable time early in the month of July.
You're not on vacation in July, right? I think you have to.
I work year-round.
Going to have to do that, you really have to go with the bulk of who can attend. It may be you want to do it the early half of July, it may be the other people may be there and available the early half of August, and out of equity, you really have to go with the will of the people. Who is available the middle or the beginning of July to do that? Who can call in by phone, or, you know, conference call or Skype in? Paul?
If I may just to, I know you suggested you wanted a vote. If I were to send around, you know, a possible date throughout, so we could have two questions, one, do you want a meeting, one, do you not, so that that can come out, and then have potential timelines, because I think it is a bit awkward for everyone around the table right now to look at their calendars. I think that everyone can appreciate that the public wants all of us there talking about this important issue for them. So I'm happy to send an email right after this meeting, which we can discuss there, but open to suggestion.
Following up on trustee Murray's suggestion of sending that around, how many other special meetings are we going to have, though? Like, if we send one around for one meeting, what about the other meetings we're going to have?
Not sure if we need to have anything on budget since we spent an inordinate amount of time on budget. Are we okay with budget? You passed, everything's good on budget. So we don't need anything on budget. I'm calling a special meeting of the In Camera Board Meeting next week, and there was something else. Oh, there may be another one later on. Okay, yes. And there's In Camera Meetings coming forth. Okay. Yes. Hmm? Um, yes, but special meetings of the Board may take priority. Okay. Trustee Quinn.
I just wanted to add, Madam Chair, that I think the ratepayers expect us to be working right through the year. We are not akin to teachers who work and then have their vacations at that time. We're hired, our elected Board meant to be working the entire year round.
Many of us do work the entire year round, but they're entitled to their holidays, too. Okay. Any, trustee Carabella.
I'll second the motion.
All right, and second the motion. Which motion are we talking about right now?
To me, for a policy meeting, special policy meeting on this topic.
I thought that Paul was going to be sending a list around.
Said you wanted a motion.
Oh, no, then Paul said he was going to send the list around.
I prefer it, just so we can get all the same means, if that's all right with you.
Yeah.
We are going to have a meeting.
It's going to send a list. Uh, go ahead.
Point of order, if I may. Would the mover of the motion simply make the motion to be that we add a special meeting during the summer, at which time to be called by the Policy Chair? Can we agree on that kind of motion?
That's good, that's good. A second or? Trustee Tritz, anyone want to speak to that? Good, okay. Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria.
Opposed.
Trustee Roe.
Opposed.
Trustee Christina.
Opposed.
Trustee Danko.
Favor.
Vice Chair Murray.
In favor.
Trustee Tritz.
In favor.
Trustee Michael.
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Ingrid.
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
All right. It passes. Okay, so Vice Chair Murray will send out around your email. All right. Nothing else on that? Okay, now where are we?
Madam Chair, we'll also make, sorry if I may, just we'll also make it public, just because I know there are some, the public obviously wants to see the discussion that takes place in the Policy Committee. So we will ensure that that is out as early as possible so that anyone who would like to attend is more than welcome to.
Once you get the final date.
Correct.
Yes, okay. All right, anybody else want to that item, nine point one, the stakeholder feedback? Are we finished there for now? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Superintendent Overholt and all the research people, and everyone else has worked so hard on that initiative. Information items, ten point one, Student Trustee Update. Student trustee Christina.
So just looking at the past year and the past two years that I've been on the Board, and I've been on the Board for two years with Ingrid now, and one year with Anna, we've made some improvements with our Student Senate, and we've come a long way. Our Senators are more engaged than ever. We've established our Bullying Prevention Initiative with the help of Ms. Pennelli, and we've worked with international students. We've held leadership conferences, and we've really engaged provincially and had our voice heard at this table, and we've brought some of the procedures of the Board to them, and that was really engaging for them. So those are steps we've taken within this year and within the past couple of years to try to improve the engagement of the Senate. And on behalf of three of us, we're very proud of what we've been able to do, and we're very proud of the Senators we've had over the past two years. Personally, being a part of this Board has been amazing for me. I remember two years ago I came in as a scared fifteen-year-old girl who was like terrified of saying prayer, and now I can come up here and speak my mind and speak with all of you. And you guys have all made me grow in so many ways, more than you know, and each of you have contributed to that. And I can honestly say that I've had the pleasure and I've had the honor of working and getting to know each one of you. Each of you have become my role models, and you've inspired me in so many ways. I've been challenged to grow as a person. You guys have really made me realize the person I want to become and where I want to go in life. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for that, and I will always cherish my time here. So thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Anna Maria.
I think Christina put everything I wanted to say or try, wanted to try to say very eloquently. Although I've only been part of the Board for half the time she has one a year, I also think it was an incredible growing opportunity. I thought we were able to elevate the Student Senate, as she had said, and bring a lot of things back to them, and just kind of restructure the way we saw and give the students a purpose of why they were there. Personally, the Leadership Conference we just had two weeks ago went very well, and I thank my co-trustees for their support on that, as well as the incomings. And just personally, I think I've taken a lot from this role, whether it was just information on how the Board operates, our school boards, what's happening in our schools, or as well as just the format and just the insight I've gained. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you very much.
I'll be quick, because I think Christina put everything that I wanted to say perfectly. But I just remember sitting with my principal in his office when I was running for my second term, and he was saying to me, like, what is this experience, like, why do you want to be re-elected? And I just kind of sat there in that moment, and I thought that nothing so far in my life has impacted me and has challenged me and has forced me to consider what's important to me and what I value more than this position has. And I can definitely relate to what Christina said about walking in here two years ago, and just even at a school basis, as I was as a student, just being afraid to talk in class, or not being very open with my opinions and feared that they're going to get judged. And now I feel so confident in being able to speak my mind and being able to advocate for what I believe in. And I think that that was such a price, it's priceless having that. I don't think anything has shaped me in the way that this Board has, and I want to thank you so much for giving me something so priceless out of my experience in high school, and something that I will hold with me forever, and I will always be proud of being a student of HCSB, and I'll always be proud of being a student trustee for HCSB, HCSB, I'm getting mumbled. But, so thank you. And as Christina said, we valued this time here so much, more than you can ever imagine, and just learning and hearing, everything that was said at this meeting, everyone who talked, I don't know if you realize that you've made an influence on me, and you've made an impact, and you've made me grow as a person, but it did. Everything that was said here, it made me grow as a person, and everything that I did these past two years made me grow as a person. So I want to thank you so much for influencing me and shaping me into the person I am today. So thank you.
Thank you, student Ingrid. Now the Director.
Through you, Madam Chair. I wrote each of the Student Trustees a little card to say, it seemed just like yesterday you began, and the time has gone very fast, but I must tell you on behalf of senior staff and what I witnessed by your actions during your tenure as Student Trustees, you are thoughtful, you are creative, and you are the voice of our students, and you've relayed those messages very eloquently and with tact and diplomacy, and we wish you all the best, and please keep in touch, and God bless you as you journey. Thank you.
Thank you, and on behalf of the Board of Trustees, it has truly been an honor to have you three ladies here with us every two weeks. You've brought much into our world, much into our lives, and you've given the viewpoint of the students, which is really critical. And besides that, we really enjoy your company. So thank you so much for being part of this Board, and it's been an honor. Thank you.
And I appreciate very much the comments from everyone there, but I know they're in the middle of exam period, and if we wanted to release them now and set them free, that might be something fantastic to do.
You want to be set free right now? You're welcome to go if you wish. If you need to go, you can go. Guess exams are coming up, so we're, yeah, you are, yes, yeah. Yeah, it's the nineteenth, yes, are we done here with the girls?
Are we done here with the, the girls can go, Paula?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so, girls, we're going to miss you. But come back and visit. Come back and visit. Thank you. Yes. And get your mileage in, don't forget that, all right? I'll need your mileage. All right. Ten point two, school educational field trips. Superintendent Pennelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please find attached a list of proposed excursions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on field trips? None, moving along. Ten point three, construction report. Saint Scholastica Catholic Elementary School. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, we present the Saint Scholastica Construction Report for May. So the roof is now nearly complete. We are on to site grading, curbs, asphalt, and interior finishing is ongoing. We have some decorative block already going in. We will still be tight, as always, getting the construction done over the summer, but we are making progress and on track for an opening in September. Have you taken any questions you might have?
Any questions, Ryan? Nope, okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Ryan, and your team. Ten point four, budget report from September the first, 2017, to May thirty-first, 2018. Superintendent Nagoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attached is the quarterly budget report for the current year, for the nine months ending May thirty-first. All revenues and expenses to date appear to be on track and within the expected ranges. The next report will be presented to trustees on the second meeting in September, and will contain the preliminary year-end position for 2017-18. And myself and Erin would be happy to address any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Any questions on the budget report for the current, for the school year? None? They've worn out, or, okay. Ten point five, capital projects report as of May thirty-first, 2018. Superintendent Nagoy?
Trustees, I presented with the quarterly capital report for the current year, for the nine months ending May thirty-first. We currently have thirty million, thirty point one million EDC, Education Development Charge deficit. Pages six to thirteen reflect the capital projects that are ongoing. And you will note that Saint Scholastica seems to be slightly over budget. However, there are EDC eligible costs that have to be reallocated out of that amount. And we expect, therefore, that all of the capital projects to be completed on time and within budget. And I would be happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Any questions, Superintendent Nagoy? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Let the hugging commence. Thank you. Just to the treasurer, on the EDC shortfall, and the presentation we had earlier this evening, what is our plan for repaying that? What's the timeline for repaying that shortfall?
For a growing board, it is quite the norm to have an EDC deficit, because we are purchasing upfront the sites, and they are being recovered, the revenues are being recovered over a fifteen-year period. So you're always going to be playing catch-up. As long as we grow, we will have a deficit. We currently do short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes until such time that that is covered. If we sell a site, any EDC eligible cost that we spent on purchasing it in the first place, go and replenish this. If we purchase a site, it becomes a higher deficit. So it's a moving target, and we do have a fifteen-year horizon to cover for it. And essentially, unless we stop growing, we will be in this position for the long term.
Thank you. And I was just thinking through you, Madam Chair, about the risks of that plan. As a growing board, we are planning for future growth predictions and projections, but we don't necessarily know that the development will necessarily come. So how do we mitigate that risk if Milton X doesn't actually come into fruition, or Georgetown twenty twenty doesn't actually happen?
That's a great question. We do have projected sites, and they are also part of the Long-Term Capital Plan, where we would identify growing needs. So there's a couple of sites in North Oakville, for example, a few sites in Milton. We identify them through the development stage and the planning with the town or the city. But we don't move on purchasing them until such time that we know we have the need over the next few years. So that's a much shorter timeframe, when we know the students that we need to serve are already there or are moving in within the year we need to build the schools. In Milton, the students are already there. They're in grades that are coming up to become part of a secondary school, for example. So they are already existing, most of them are already existing residents. Additional development, yes, is part of the total number for the schools we're looking at. But we do have current needs that are far exceeding our available space right now. So the way we mitigate it is that we would place an option on a site until such time that we need to actually purchase it and spend the money when we know we have approval from the ministry to build a school, and we have the students that will be starting in that school.
Any other questions? No, okay. Thank you very much. Superintendent Nagoy, ten point six, Audit Committee Report to the Board of Trustees. Trustee Row?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the list of topics that were discussed at the public meeting of the Audit Committee, the last Audit Committee. Two of them were resolutions, one on the external audits, auditors' report for last year, and the plan for the internal auditors. And then we also discussed the status report of the internal auditors and the proposed Audit Committee meeting for next year. Thank you.
Any questions for Trustee Row? None, all right. Thank you very much. The Culture of Life update. Superintendent Rose?
Yes, trustees have in front of them an information report on their Culture of Life update. And just a bit of background about the Culture of Life Committee. It began around 2004, when students from our secondary schools attended the March for Life on Parthamen Hill. And since then, we've had a committee at the board level formed. The three main goals of the committee or pillars would be, as highlighted in the report, would be respect for the preborn, chastity and respect for dying. And the committee looks to advocate and inform and support in those three areas. The committee meets regularly, and its members of the system committee include the System Chaplain, the Superintendent of Education, responsible for faith formation, a secondary vice-principal, and a representative from Halton Alive. In addition, each secondary school has a representative. And we've also had two of our trustees, trustee Carabella and trustee Trites, have joined us, the Culture of Life meetings. The board provides an annual budget of $6,000 to support the Culture of Life at the system level, and funding goes to provide the Diocesan Leadership Day and the annual March for Life in Ottawa. And in the report, as you see, some of the system planning includes, as I mentioned, the annual National March for Life, the Diocesan Life Leadership Conference, the HCSB Pro-Life Education Day, and every other year we have a chastity speaker come to address the grade nine and ten students. And this year Brett Alman was the speaker. So the clubs, at the school level, the clubs operate locally, and they're supervised by members of the school chaplaincy teams. And in some cases, they're supervised by other members of staff who have an interest. What I've included in the report is just some of the goals and the financial summaries from each of the schools. And moving forward into next year, the Culture of Life Committee is making preparations for the 2018-2019 year, school year. Plans are being made for a Pro-Life Education Day in the fall of 2018, which will coincide with the Halton Alive Gala. And in February 2019, a Diocesan Student Leadership Conference will take place in February. And once again, in May, May ninth and tenth, students and staff from our school board will be participating in the Twenty-Second Annual National March for Life in Ottawa. Will there be a conference and a banquet taking place? So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have concerning this.
Thank you. Excellent work. Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much for the report. I have a question for the Director, and it relates to a delegate who came to our board last or the previous meeting, and was a student at one of our schools, I believe. She was a member of Culture of Life Committee. And she told us how she didn't feel safe or welcomed in her own school being a member of the Culture of Life Committee. So I'm wondering how we might address that individual concern and find out if it's something that's more prevalent in our board.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think I would have to debrief with that student to get more details, because it would be more specific as to what is she not feeling welcome, and what's being said to her, and by whom. And maybe we can raise the profile of that committee at the school, so that it's not looked upon, I mean, in a negative way. So we'd have to debrief with that student more thoroughly.
Any other comments or questions? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report. I was hoping to see insight as well that the motion that was passed last year in 2017 that helped to create the Civis Day for the Culture of Life Committee, and also make it clear that each high school has to have a pro-life club. So although you mentioned that some are run by chaplains, the goal is that there's a separate pro-life club with focusing on the three pillars, abortion, to fully focus on issues surrounding abortion, euthanasia and chastity. So that's there. So that's, and it was voted on unanimously, that that should be a big focus. And I think that that would help. Also, the other thing I noticed was, one of the Civis Days, I don't know, it didn't have a date, and it said that it was just to, the money is collected at the beginning. And one of the goals of a Civis Day is precisely to raise awareness, have, you know, information, education on it. And I think that could even help the student also, that it's a school event that is being promoted by the school.
Just through the chair, I noticed that in looking at the reports, one of them, I think it was a levy at the beginning of the year that they went towards it. That's something I think that we could, you know, to create a greater awareness, I could share with Superintendent and our moving forward with that. And I think just in looking at sort of the, you know, the names of the clubs, most of them have some sort of, you know, a Culture of Life Club or Longhorns for Life. There are one or two of them that are, they're not clearly defined in some of the schools. But I think moving forward, it would be good to have, make that association. So that's something that I could raise with Superintendent and our as well going into next year.
Just a follow-up. I know that being on the Culture of Life Committee, that two of the schools, STA and Assumption, didn't have a separate pro-life club during the year. And the goal was that after the March for Life, when there is the enthusiasm and the student body, that something could be established going forward. So I hope that takes place.
And I think that was one of the schools I was alluding to, and I found out their last meeting about that as well. So I thank you for sharing that.
Okay. Director Dawson?
Just to follow up on the motion, talked about focusing on abortion, euthanasia and chastity. And each of these clubs had to write goals that were respect for the preborn, chastity and respect for the dying. So we made sure that the clubs had goals, and those are listed in your package for each club, each school. So there was three goals, and they all had to come up with an action plan on how they were going to include those three goals, and it's listed in the package.
Thank you. Any further questions? No, all right. Thank you very much. Eleven point one, minutes of the November sixteenth Audit Committee meeting. Eleven point two, minutes of the May seventh CPIC meeting. Eleven point three, minutes of the May eighth Policy Committee meeting. Those are all in your package, trustees. Twelve, correspondence. There is a letter from Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. Twelve-two, C Waddick. Twelve-three, M Lorenko. Open question period, no questions at all tonight. So trustees, we will move back into the in-camera portion, because we still have quite a bit of work to do there. To our guests and to our fellow student trustees here, thank you very much for coming this evening, and come again, we're a lot of fun. Come again. The next meeting will be, apart from any sudden meetings, our next meeting will be September fourth. Thank you very much. Okay, trustees, in five minutes, we'll move into in-camera.